Item number three, I don't see Pastor Moore here. So we'll move to item four, adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We have one change. Item nine A is going to move the requested to be rescheduled. It'll stay on the agenda, but item thirteen, we're going to add sub-paragraph J as an additional grounds for the executive session. So with that amendment, I would move we adopt the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
No sign-ups.
Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
That's been removed from the consent agenda, so I would move that we approve it as presented and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Mylum?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burnt?
Aye.
Councilwoman Palmer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilwoman Borton?
Aye.
All ayes? There were no items moved from the consent agenda. Item eight A is under community presentations. And maybe I'll see if Caleb, do you want to introduce this item?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, a little bit, I guess I can start the, this topic. I copied you all on an email probably about three or four weeks ago about some ongoing discussions about putting back Idaho Avenue, the block between Main and Second Street, back together. As you're all aware, for about two years, there was the placemaking project with the decking, the bike rack, and the planters that were out in the streetscape trying to activate that. As you know, that, those improvements went away earlier this year and been having some dialogue with MDBA as well as ACHD about what, what striping for parking looks like going back. Originally, we had just asked ACHD to put it back the way it was a couple of years ago. Then the MDBA requested that angle parking be evaluated on that block. Through that process, Nick Grove, president of the MDBA, sent a letter to ACHD. They said, yep, it's possible. We want to hear from the city on what they think about this alternative plan. There's also some discussion, some talk about converting it to one-way. That's kind of taken a backseat at this point. But really, what's on the table now is to gain a handful of additional parking stalls on the north side of the block by converting the parallel parking to angle parking and essentially leaving the accessible stall that historically has been the last stall on the north side of the block, on the westernmost side, kind of by Laffa Latte and the park in place, and then modify the rest of that block for parking. So Nick Grove is here this afternoon, this evening, to discuss with you a potential partnership to do, to do that, to basically stripe it back with angle parking.
Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
If you'll state your name and address for the record.
All right. Nick Grove, 1536 Northwest Fur Street, president of the Downtown Business Association. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for having me here again this evening. So just to reiterate what Caleb said, what we're seeking to do is to gain hopefully between six to eight additional parking spots on that section of Idaho Avenue to help the businesses that are there, but also to help with the upcoming additions to downtown that we're looking for with the RFP process and with other building projects that are being discussed for downtown. So we're helping, we're hoping to get more parking available for customers in our downtown. What we're asking for tonight is to complete the placemaking project and to go back, or to create the additional parking. And MDBA does not have a lot of money. We're still a small organization. We're growing as fast as we can, but you know, there's only so many people we can get to corral and we're, we're getting there. We're almost close to forty members, which is more than double what we started the year with. And so we're gaining. But what we're bringing to the table this time, rather than simply having our hands out, asking for help from the city, is to have the MDBA contribute up to a thousand dollars towards converting these spaces, or converting that street into additional spaces. And we are going to go to the MDC Parking Committee tomorrow and ask that they split the remaining costs with the city, if you were to agree to this, for the engineering of the new parking spots, because ACHD will require, as Caleb can give more information, an engineered stamp saying that it's okay to do the parking the way it is, and then to also have someone paint the actual stripes. So that is what I'm here to talk about tonight, I guess.
Thank you, Nick. Counsel questions? Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor. Nick, what's the total cost on doing the whole thing, being done with it?
That is, I don't have a solid number yet. Caleb can give additional information on that.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, so I was just looking at the estimate that we, we got from, or the invoice we got from Back to Black, who did the, the striping out there when we did the project a couple of years ago. It had other things that they did, like the grinding of the asphalt and obliterating other part, other existing paint on there that wouldn't apply to this. But it was about forty-two hundred dollars that they charged for that. I would anticipate something about half of that, because really what this is, is just painting that. But they will have traffic control, so they still gotta, you know, block the street type of a thing while this is going on. So again, it's a ballpark. We haven't actually went out for that, but I would say probably two thousand dollars, maybe twenty-five hundred dollars to actually do the painting. We do have an estimate, though, from Keller and Associates to do the, the design. I did confirm today, I got a confirmation from ACHD in their traffic division. The design of this has to be done by a stamped professional engineer. They want a stamped plan to do this. And the cost to that is about five thousand dollars. So the design is going to cost twice, basically, what it's going to cost to actually install it, but we do have to have somebody that's licensed to design this thing. And we've only talked to one firm, but it's a firm we've done business with on a regular basis. Just as an aside note, I told ACHD that, I said, it seems kind of high, and they said, yeah, it's right now, that's probably about what it's going to cost, even though it's going to be a one-page design. So anyways, we can maybe shop that around a little bit more to see if we can get a little bit better deal on that, but that's where the five thousand dollar comes in. That's what Keller told us they would charge to do this work right now.
Madam Mayor. I feel like, like this is an episode of Shark Tank, and I'm out.
Well, if you look at the price of parking spots, you know, if it's the five thousand plus the rounded to twenty-five hundred, it's pretty inexpensive for six additional spots. Is that six to eight? So it is adding parking in our downtown. And it's stupid. So just thought I'd say that, too. Mr. Palmer.
I mean, with the money that we've already spent on it, you know, they come to us and said, hey, this is going to do things for us as a business opportunity for Idaho Avenue. And then they're like, we don't want it, take it away. Find somewhere else to put it. So we took it away. It's like, if, if the businesses there want to adjust the parking, they need to pay for it. We've already invested, I mean, I agree, it would be better to have additional parking spaces there, but I think the, the taxpayers have already funded enough for the, the ideas running around on Idaho Avenue. I think they need to save their money and do it themselves, or talk MDC into wasting their portion of taxpayer dollars on it, but I think we should stay out of it at this point.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
What, what was, before we changed a couple of years ago, what, what was the design previous, just, are we, are we switching it back to where it was before?
No.
So was, Madam Mayor, so was it parallel one side?
We had, it was parallel parking on both sides of the road.
Okay.
And there is an opportunity to put in angled, and at least ACHD has, has moved to allow that. And they've done the resurfacing, so they have come up and repaired the grinding and that sort of thing. So really, what is left is the stamped engineered document and the, the painting of the lines.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Nick, first of all, thank you for being here and great job that you've done with the Downtown Business Association. Do you have a timeline for this? What are we looking at?
I might defer to Caleb a little bit on that, but ACHD is working on doing a fog seal on a lot of the roads in downtown Meridian right now. And so we're wanting to kind of catch it at the right time so that we don't have to go back and have something redone, rather just piggyback on what's being done at the, at that time.
Madam Mayor, I'm curious also whose budget we would be taking this out of if we decide to go for it.
I don't know, because I haven't had any price estimate, and certainly it would depend on what is discussed at MDC tomorrow as well.
Thank you.
If, if council has an interest, we can bring those details back.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I would like to see if we could talk to an engineer, find out, you know, if we can find someone who'd be willing to give us a substantial discount on that stamp. You know, this is for a great cause, you know, every once in a while, in the, in the good of the community, it's not abnormal to see businesses come together and help each other out and do what's right. Just, I think, so I think we should pursue that. If we can't, that, that seems like a pretty big cost. And I would be for maybe waiting to see what downtown is going to look like, you know, with the development that is happening or potentially will happen soon, you know, with the RFP and other projects that are going on, just to see what, what, what the landscape's going to look at before we start throwing around investment. I know it's only a couple thousand dollars, but it is the people's money, and, and I think that the prudent decision would just maybe wait to see what it looks like. If we can't get a little help from an engineering firm that would give us a discount on their, on their design work and stamp, that would be my decision.
Not sure if there's an engineering business in our downtown. Certainly, we can look at, at that. But I, I guess parking has always been a challenge in downtown, and adding parking spots has been a priority that has been talked about from this council, from the MDC Board, and certainly from the MDBA. This is the most inexpensive parking spots that you will get. So unless we never need another parking spot, I would agree. Ridiculous to, to get a single piece of paper for five thousand dollars. The striping has to be done irregardless, but it is the biggest bang for your buck if you want to add parking spots.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
What's the net gain in parking spaces?
Six to eight. Six to eight is what, is what we've been told so far.
So, Madam Mayor, Mr. Palmer, the reason it's, it's a range right now is because we don't have the design. We don't know exactly what the specs are, so we need somebody that has all of the dimensional standards, that they know what it has to be to tell us the exact number, but yeah, six to eight is what we're kind of guestimating.
Madam Mayor, so then say the whole thing costs seventy-five hundred bucks with your thousand, and if we divide the rest with MDC, we're looking at like thirty-two fifty from the city, which would equate almost, so it'd be the entire Meridian City property tax portion from almost seven of our neighbors to add six to eight parking spots. Something to consider.
Any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Well, I'm with you. This sucks. Or, I don't know, maybe that's not the word used, but it's my word. It does seem a little outrageous that, that ACHD is making us jump through those kind of hoops, especially when they're wanting to be us to partner with projects for them. However, parking is, has become a huge problem in downtown. We don't know what this new project, if it's going to bring a lot of new parking, I'm hoping that it does. However, you know, we have the chance to gain six to eight parking spaces, and that's, that's quite a bit. I mean, it's not near enough for what we need, but I think we should take any opportunity that we can to use the space the most efficient way possible. And I'm, I'm glad that you guys are willing to pitch in. I wish that your number was a little higher. I feel, you know, come and say, hey, we'll split it with you. I'd be a lot more comfortable with that, especially because we did just spend a lot of money trying to create that, that avenue into an awesome addition for you, for your, the businesses there, the benefit of them. But sometimes, you know, you make mistakes and we learn from mistakes, and I think by just going back to the way that it was and, and just wasting the space that's there that could be turned into parking would be a mistake as well.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Nick, is the, are the business owners along the north side all supportive of the angled parking?
We have not heard from anyone that has opposed it. We invited all of them to multiple meetings regarding this, and we have had representation from a vast majority of the business owners on that side of the street. We did talk to a business owner on the south side who was definitely opposed to a one-way. And after further discussion with them and with ACHD, we decided not to pursue that any further. And that's why we have left it parallel on, our suggestion is parallel on the south and diagonal on the north. It provides the, the balance of the request from the business owners on that street.
Okay. Madam Mayor, my company's a member of the MDBA, proudly so, you guys. I appreciate you stepping up, trying to spur something along. At least for the, for today's sake, I'm supportive of a partnership, collaboration with MDC and the city, the details of which I think we don't know yet. The amount of what contribution might come from the city, it must, it may be much smaller than, you know, half of seven thousand, if there's some value engineering that's available. But nonetheless, it's an opportunity to, to assist the downtown in a small but important way. Details to follow, but I would support you asking MDC to step up to the plate. It's really in their wheelhouse, for sure. And then, you know, perhaps bring back additional detail on what the final ask might be. But the idea of collaborating and trying to leverage these resources, it's the right thing to do, and it's right, and within the scope of your organization. One of the areas that we heard of disconnect with lighter, cheaper, quicker, smaller concept was some of the business owners or property owners didn't necessarily feel connected to the ultimate decision and weren't happy with it, and so we want to make sure not to avoid, or not to repeat those types of mistakes.
Councilman Borton, thank you for that. I believe the project was oversold from an MDBA standpoint at that time. We have done a much better job at disseminating information, seeking feedback, providing forums for people to be involved and to have, and to be in the know. And that is why we're, you know, at this point, we would like to conclude that project as it was seen as a three-year project back then, in, I believe, 2015, when the three partners came together to do the placemaking activity. It was seen as a trial three-year period to see what would happen, to try and activate it. The way that it happened, the way that we did it, it didn't work. That was, it is what it is. And so we're trying to, you know, do what's best for the businesses that are directly affected, but, you know, do our part to help improve the economic and cultural vitality of downtown Meridian. And this is one of the aspects that we're really seeing, that we can do a private-public partnership to accomplish that goal.
Awesome.
Okay, so we can put this back on the agenda following discussion at the parking committee that you have this week, and bring that back either this week or in, or this next week or in July.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Now we'd just like to repeat, whether it's Caleb or yourself, let's get some, let's work really hard and get some better bids in. Let's get that five thousand dollars lowered so that it's not such a big bite for us to chew. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
They can get membership in the MBD, MDBA, right? For the price of the design.
Hey, I'm willing to negotiate. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you. Okay, item nine A, public hearing continued for H. 2018 dash zero zero four two. This is needing to be rescheduled to July seventeenth. And you were given a heads-up that this had to be on the agenda, again, because of the noticing and the need to add additional addresses into the public noticing. So I, I, yes.
Sorry. We, no, we already rescheduled this, we've already moved it. Do we need to, do you need a motion again? Because we have done it.
This had to go on because it was noticed several different times, but yes, we need a motion. Mr. Attorney, we, we need a, a motion, right?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yes, I would, I would do that, even though it's been noticed for July seventeenth, I think it would be clearer for the record to do that as well.
We had a motion last week.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move, we move, we continue item nine A to July seventeenth.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue this item to July seventeenth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item nine B, it's a public hearing on H. 2018 dash zero zero three two. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the, the next application before you is a request for annexation and zoning, preliminary plat, and a conditional use permit. This site consists of eighteen point eighteen acres of land, zoned RUT in Ada County, located at three eight eight zero and three eight eight two West Franklin Road on the north side of Franklin, west of Ten Mile Road. The comprehensive plan future land use map designation for this property is high-density residential, which is a range of fifteen to forty units per acre with a target of sixteen to twenty-five units per acre in the Ten Mile Interchange Specific Area Plan. The applicant is requesting annexation and zoning of nineteen point zero seven acres of land with an R4 zoning district. The applicant proposes a multifamily development consisting of a mix of townhome and apartment-style units consistent with the high-density residential future land use map designation. The concept plan before you there shows how the property is proposed to develop. The plan there on the right shows the mix of unit types. Preliminary plat is also proposed, consisting of sixty building lots and three common lots on eighteen point eighteen acres of land in the R40 zoning district. A gross density of fifteen point three units per acre is proposed, consistent with the high-density residential designation. The subdivision is proposed to develop in one phase. Access is proposed from West Franklin Road. The stubbed street at the east side of the site, Purgia Street, is proposed to be extended with a bridge over the Kennedy Lateral and stubbed at the west boundary for future extension. And a driveway for cross-access and emergency access is proposed at the west, to the west at the north end of the site. Driveways or private streets are proposed for internal access north of Purgia Street. The Kennedy Lateral runs along the east side of the site and is proposed to be piped for public safety. The Purnum Drain runs across the southwest corner of the site. The applicant is requesting a waiver from council to not pipe that facility. A minimum of one point eight two acres of qualified open space is required to be provided with the subdivision, along with one-site amenity. A conditional use permit is requested for a multifamily development consisting of two hundred and seventy-eight dwelling units in an R40 zoning district. The units are proposed to consist of one hundred and ninety-eight townhome-style units and eighty typical apartment-style units in a mix of two- and three-story structures. The site plan was submitted as shown that depicts how the site is proposed to develop. The two-story front-loaded townhome-style structures are proposed along the west boundary of the site, transitioning to the two- and three-story rear-loaded townhome-style structures. The apartment-style structures are proposed adjacent to Franklin Road along the entryway into the development. All units will provide the minimum private usable open space area required. A minimum of two point zero six acres of qualified open space and site amenities are required in accord with UDC standards, in addition to that required with the subdivision. A total of five point three acres of qualified open space is proposed, along with the following site amenities. Some of those are as shown there. Outdoor pool complex with restroom facilities, a dual-slope pavilion, playground equipment, single zip line, five-station fitness station, full-size basketball court, dog park, open grassy playfields with minimum dimensions of one hundred feet by fifty feet in area, and pathways. These amenities fall within the quality-of-life, open-space, and recreation categories as required, and staff feels that they are commensurate with the proposed development. Parking is proposed in accord with UDC standards. A minimum of five hundred and twenty-six spaces are required, two hundred and seventy-eight of which are required to be covered. A total of seven hundred and thirty-five spaces are proposed, with three hundred and thirty-six of those being covered. That is exceeding the minimum requirements by two hundred and nine spaces. A twenty-five-foot-wide landscape street buffer is required along Franklin Road as proposed. A commuter ride pad is proposed along Franklin Road for a future transit stop. Inseptual building elevations were submitted as shown for the proposed multifamily structures. Front and rear-loaded two- and three-story townhome-style and three-story apartment-style multifamily structures are proposed. And the site plan that I showed previously just depicts the location of these structures on the site. Building materials consist of stucco, brick, and varied colors and traditional tones. The architectural character of the structures is required to comply with the design standards listed in the city's Architectural Standards Manual and the Ten Mile Interchange Specific Area Plan. The commission recommended approval of the proposed applications. James Doolin, the applicant, testified in favor. No one testified in opposition or commented. Written testimony was received from John Carpenter, TO Engineers, the applicant's representative, and also Gray Wolf, the property owner to the east. He was in support of the proposed development. He requested that when construction starts, the construction teams are sensitive to the residents whose apartments face west toward this site in regard to noise and dust abatement so it doesn't negatively impact their apartment complex. Key issue of discussion at the commission hearing, the applicant requested clarification from staff in regard to items noted in the applicant's response to the staff report. Staff did provide clarification of those items. Key issues of discussion by the commission was the applicant's request for the certificate of zoning compliance application to be allowed to be submitted prior to the final plat being recorded instead of after, as required in condition number one point three point four. And the commission- And the commission did, um, vote to leave that requirement in. The commission made the following changes to staff recommendation. Uh, strike condition 1.5.7, as it did not apply to this development, and modification of condition number 1.2.3 to add the language "if allowed by ACHD." This pertained to the requirement for the storm drainage swale along Franklin Road to be vegetated. The only outstanding issue for Council tonight is the applicant's request for a waiver to UDC 11-3A-6B3 to not pipe the Purdum Drain and leave it open. And there's just a little detail of the Purdum Drain, uh, along the southwest boundary of the site. Written testimony, uh, since the commission hearing, was received from Sandy Lindsey. Um, she was concerned pertaining to congestion and impact on property values of adjacent, uh, residential properties from the apartment development. And then, the full letter is in your, um, application project file. Staff will stand for any questions.
Mr. Byrd.
Sorry, Dean. Can you hear me now? Dean, sorry. Sorry, buddy. Um, Sonya, can you please go back to the picture? Um, I think it was the second to the last slide where it showed, did, I think it was that two-story, right there, back. There you go. Perfect, thank you.
Sonya, do you have a, um, elevate, or not an elevation of the development, but, um, a site plan that has how it blends with the rest of them, how this sits out there?
With the development to the east, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I, I really don't know. This is just a, um, very old aerial view of the property. I could, um, possibly bring up, though, Google Maps.
So, Madam Mayor, Council, um, the property that you're looking at is the, um, green kind of triangle area. The property to the east is the existing multifamily development, Silver Oaks.
Is, is there any cross-access? How, how are they, isn't there going to be a light out here for the church and the other apartments?
I believe one is planned at Umbria Hills. Um, I don't think my pointer works on this one, but if you can see that, um, road that goes out to Franklin Road there, and then Perugia is the one that, um, is currently stubbed to the east boundary of the site, that's being extended to this project's west boundary.
And, and that, do they have another entrance and exit out onto Franklin? Or is it all going to the light?
No, this property does have an access on Franklin. I can go back to the site plan if you'd like me to.
Yeah. Okay.
So, if you can see my pointer here, this is, um, Perugia Street, currently stubbed right here at the east boundary. They're going to construct a bridge over the Kennedy Lateral. They're going to bring it through the site as a public street and stub to the west boundary. The access from Franklin is, um, right here, my pointer's at, and then they're also proposing a cross-access, um, driveway and emergency access here at the northwest corner of the site.
Thank you. Council, any other questions at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Love Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Sonya, so, has there been any discussion regarding the concern for the people already in the apartments where they'll be building, which looks like right next to the other apartments? What was it, Gray Wolf? Any discussion regarding his letter?
At the commission?
Mm-hmm.
There was not, no.
Okay, any other questions at this point? See applicant here. Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of the Council. My name is James Doolin. My address is 4685 South Highland Drive, Salt Lake City, Utah.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your time tonight. A couple of things I'd like to address, and then I'll stand for questions. So, we tried to be thoughtful in our design, specifically with the Franklin Apartments to our east. Between our property and their apartment complex, there's the Kennedy Lateral. They were not required to tile the Kennedy Lateral. They put a fence on their side of the Kennedy Lateral. We're proposing to tile that, uh, to provide public safety. It runs roughly 1,850 feet along our property line. So, we thought for health and safety, it'd be best to, um, tile that. Additionally, it provides a, a nice buffer, so there's a, a fairly wide easement for that Kennedy Lateral, and then our development starts to the west of that. Um, we tried to be thoughtful by not putting, um, a bunch of row of garages facing their property. You do have some front doors facing the property to the east, and as you go down, you see sides of buildings. And so, we tried to have a nice flow from their development to our development. Uh, we did meet with, with Gray Wolf at the, um, that's his name correct? Uh, at the neighborhood meeting, and we talked about our development impact. He's planning to do some, I believe, some, um, storage units in front of his property, and he's also been developing the back portion of his property. And with construction, there is some nuisance, but we'll do everything we possibly can to mitigate that nuisance, to have as little impact on his tenants as possible. Uh, the other thing I'd like to address is the Purdum Drain. The Purdum Drain runs on the nor, or the southwest portion of our property. Uh, the easement for that drain sits on our property as well as the neighboring property to the west. Uh, it runs about eighty, 185 feet on our property. And the way the, the topography of our site works, it's, that drain kind of sits lower. And we felt that, um, one, it'd be difficult to pipe, being that portion of it's on the neighboring property. The other thing, in meeting with the neighbor of that property at our, uh, neighborhood meeting, he asked that we could provide as big of a buffer as possible. And so, by not tiling, it allows that area to be undeveloped. We'll put a fence line along the wall on our side of the property, and then it'll be a nice transition over to his property. So, that's why we're requesting not to tile that portion. Aside from that, I will stand for any questions.
Council, any questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Sign-ups, Madam Mayor?
Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this application? Seeing no public testimony?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess I do have a question for the applicant, sorry. I was thinking, when you were reading...
I thought you guys were being too easy on me, so I was a little surprised.
Just moving slow today. Um, so, I'm just trying to figure if I either missed something. I like, your amenity package is, is very nice. However, I didn't notice any, any type of indoor amenities. Um, and this is a, we do have quite brutal winters sometimes, and so, do, is there something in there for these folks to do during the winter?
Yeah, we did...
Is there a clubhouse or anything?
We, we do not have a clubhouse. Um, historically, in our Brickyard Development that, uh, we brought through to Council about a year ago, we had a, a clubhouse on that development. Historically, the clubhouses get used less than the other amenities. Uh, accessibility, clubhouse being locked and, and stuff like that, and then it's also a nuisance sometimes when people break in and, and cause issues. So, we do not have any indoor amenities. We tried to provide plenty of outdoor amenities. And a lot of our amenities can be used in winter, you know, it, there's not a lot of snow, so, snow's not an issue. People still play basketball, people still walk on the paths and do the fitness. We have fitness stations and, and stuff like that, but unfortunately, we do not have any indoor amenities.
You weren't here last winter, were you?
No.
Or two. Well, yeah.
Well, I'm hoping, I was gonna make a comment about global warming, but hopefully that doesn't happen.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Ms. Mylum, Home Court is only a little over a mile away. If I'm thinking this is the right same place, yeah. Giant multimillion-dollar indoor facility that the city owns that they will have access to.
I had one more.
So, what, what is the idea behind the, the townhomes, uh, the long row of, of homes? Can you maybe talk about that?
So, the townhomes on the west side of the property, we put, uh, two-story, we designed it to have two-story townhomes to transition to, uh, future development to the west. Uh, in the middle of the development, there are three-story townhomes, which correlates with the Franklin Apartments. As far as additional details?
It, it just looked like they were one long row of apartments or townhomes.
So, on the west side, you'll see number seven and number eight, where my mouse is. That's an eight-plex. Those are eight-plexes there, and there's eight-plexes there. So, eight-plexes are the, the most units we have in one specific building. And then, everything else, you'll have...
I think it's probably the picture of, of, um, nine through eighteen, twenty through twenty-three, this, and, and is this where the square that says one, is that green space?
Yes, that is green space. So, all of these front doors enter out onto green space with trails that meander through, and then we'll have the amenities. We try to focus our amenity packages in areas, uh, of concentrated use. So, you have your pool and a totlot and the zipline all centered together. And then, on the, uh, southeast side, over by the workout stations, you have workout station, open play area, and then also the basketball court.
So, this law, linear green area is, they're kind of their front yard and backyard, too?
Yeah, there's, yeah, so the units all load out onto those open green area, green spaces.
And are these, um, condominiumized, or these are all rentals?
They'll be rentals.
Are they going to be owned as a development, or are they going to be sold off individually?
Sold off into typically a four-plex, uh, configuration. HOA, there'll be an HOA that manages all exterior of the buildings, all landscaping. Anything on the outside of the building footprint will be managed and maintained by the HOA.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Byrd.
I think you and I are on the same page. First off, before I get into my concern, I, I appreciate the parking. Um, seems like you guys have, um, planned for substantial amount of parking, and, um, appreciate that. That was, uh, that's nice. Uh, I don't, I really don't have a, a big concern with the, with the amenities. I think they look nice. My only concern is what the mayor was talking about, is those rear, rear-loaded townhomes. They just seem extraordinarily dense. If there was a way that we, we could break that up a little bit, it just seems like one long row of, just one long building. Is there, would there be a way to...
So, and the way we've tried to address that is by having two-story and three-stories. So, we're breaking up the, the mass of the building by having two stories on the ends and then three stories.
Get that.
So, you're breaking up the configuration a little bit.
I get that.
The zone calls for density, somewhere, target density, 16 acres and above. We're trying to hit that density requirement. There's also open space requirement that we're required to hit, too. And so, we tried to lay out the project as efficiently as possible, but still providing a very livable atmosphere. So, the, the rear of the units is where you park your car, the front of the units is where you live, and so, we tried to focus a lot of the effort on the front, more of a community-focused, uh, atmosphere with the units, where all the front doors enter out onto open space. We like that verse, we, we could have put more front-loaded units in there, but then you have front doors going out into driveways and streets. And we try to keep the pedestrian traffic away from the vehicular traffic, if that makes sense. So, I understand your concern. We tried our best to try to open it up as best as possible. We feel that corridor down, the green space corridor down the middle, really provides a nice feel. And on a streetscape, as you're going down Perugia Street or along Franklin, you're going to see, um, a lot of the open space, and then you're also going to see some interesting different elevations. Um, we have the apartments on the front, excuse me, along with the, uh, townhomes on the front, just to kind of break up that streetscape. So, and then, as you're not, as you're going down Perugia as well, which is a public street, you're seeing sides of buildings, not big masses of buildings. As you drive deeper into the development, you do see a bit more masses, but again, once you get inside the unit, the way it lives, it lives out into open space. So, and then parking, to address your parking, last time I was here, I believe your middle name, you said, was parking, and his middle name was open space. So, what we tried to do is, we've talked about, is our parking is well over the minimum, and our open space is also well over the minimum.
You have a good memory.
We listen on this side.
Madam Mayor, but I was on P and Z last time, so I was in a different seat.
That one?
I changed his middle name.
I don't know what it is now, though. You have a good memory.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Just out of curiosity, so, in the packet, it said the gross, the net, the gross density is, uh, 15.3 units per acre, but the net was like 67? Is that, was that correct, or?
I don't know how...
I don't know. She said you calculated that.
Density's calculated.
So, after you take out all the open space and streets, and it seemed like a larger jump than I'm used to seeing.
Yeah, and I don't know what the net density represents. I just know what the overall acreage of the development is, which is, I gotta check to my notes, 19 acres or... So, we have 278 units over 18.18 acres, which works out to be 15.3 units per acre.
Madam Mayor. That's okay, I, I had already asked her, she didn't, she said, she got the numbers from you, so...
She blame me?
That's okay. It's not really that important. It was more just out of curiosity, so...
Yeah, and I, if I gave her that, I don't remember.
Because gross is what we go by.
Yeah.
Anyway. I had another question. Back to the, the management. So, they're going to be all sold off in, as four-plexes, even though they're eight-plexes? You're going to be selling half of the building?
Correct.
And then, you're going to have, the HOA's going to take care of the outside and all of the amenities. Is there also going to be a, a single-source management company that takes care of the, the rentals? This is somewhere that we see a lot of, a lot of problems. Um, if, if any landlords can just do whatever they want, and they're charging different rents and taking care of their places differently, eventually... eventually, it, it becomes a problem.
Yeah, so on the property management side, that's renting the inside of the unit. That property management company does not control anything on the outside of the unit. So, we do see that as a concern. We can't hold property owners to stick with just one property management company for the life of the project. But for the first two years, it is the same property management company to transition that development from vacancy to an occupied development. But down the road, a tenant or an owner could have a different property management company. We can't necessarily control that. We do control it for the first two years. But what we see is having a good HOA management company, because they're the ones that control everything on the outside of that building. From, you know, making sure people are parking their cars appropriately, not hanging things outside their window, making sure they take care of their pets, all the things that affect the, the look and the feel of that community. And I guess the ultimate culture of that community.
Madam Mayor. Okay, we've been told by other developers that you can put in, in your documents a specific property manager, or that everybody was the same, the same property manager, whether you change that at some point or not. Because the people on the inside of that apartment have a lot to do with the culture.
Yeah.
It's not just how fresh is the paint and, you know, and, and how clean is the outside. The people on the inside is, are what ma, is going to make the culture of that place. So, I disagree, sorry, as far as the property management aspect goes.
I think we would have challenges in selling these to our investors if we told them they have to use a certain company. And if that company didn't perform, they don't have any option. So, I guess it's legal, but it's not practical with our business model. With that being said, our investors are paying a large sum of money. And so, we believe they should care, and they do care, about the overall renter of their community, of, of their unit. And so, we try to control it the best we can. But with our business model, I, I think it would restrict our ability to sell these units if somebody was required to have a certain property management company for the life of the project.
Any other questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
Madam Mayor. James, am I understanding this right? Just kind of trying to clarify that the homeowners will be the people that have purchased and could be very absentee.
Correct.
But, and collectively, they will decide who is managing the property overall? Or could each one have a separate management that could never even talk to each other?
There's an HOA management company and a property management company. The HOA management company, again, manages everything on the exterior of the building. Property management company takes care of renting the inside of the unit out to tenants. For the first two years, everybody's gonna have the same property management company and the same HOA management company. Going forward, after the two-year period, everyone will have that same HOA management company. There'll be an HOA board ran by the owners. And that HOA management company will be the same for everybody. But after a two-year period, that property management company could vary for different owners. So, and based on our experience, people do charge different rents down the road to fill their units, and everybody has the right to do that. We haven't seen an issue, because everybody's trying to maximize their investment. And so, they're trying to get the most rent they can. Do they compete with other people? Yes, but we haven't seen any negative impacts of having different property management companies in a, in a community.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So, how many total four-plexes do you have? So, what is the potential number of different owners?
It depends. What was the total lot count? Do you know off the top of your head, Sonia?
Yes, it was.
Sixty.
Sixty, yeah.
The twenty-plex, the, the apartment-style building is a twenty-unit building. That'll be platted as one lot, so that'll have one owner. And then the other, you can see the property lines, but there'll be roughly sixty. And, you know, many times our investors buy more than one, one four-plex. So, a max of sixty different owners.
Thank you.
I guess just to address the property management issue. In a single-family residential or in a, in a development like this that has owner-occupied, everybody lives differently. And so, every, the culture's impacted by all the different owners. What's key is that HOA management company making sure they're enforcing rules, making sure everybody's abiding by the rules, and maintaining the exterior of the building. And so, I, I don't see that property management issue being as material, because it's very similar to just a, a normal community of owner-occupied. Because there's nobody restricting who can buy and not buy a unit, or a residential unit in a development.
Sonia, a question, and, or maybe of the applicant. What is the year of the widening in that area for Franklin?
Madam Mayor, I, I'm unsure of the year.
Okay.
Of the year that it was widened, or the year, because it was just recently widened, two years ago?
All the way to Black Cat? Have I not been on that road? Crazy. Thank you. I probably should drive out there more often.
We should go on a field trip. Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Yes, then there's, what we haven't talked about is your request for the CCC application to be allowed to be submitted prior to the final plat being recorded. And what is your reasoning for that?
We had some issues with our Brickyard subdivision where we recorded the plat and then later had some issues where the city wanted, we had some issues we ended up working out. But that, we were going through those issues at the time that we had an opportunity to respond to that comment. So, we asked for it directly related to an issue we had. We've since resolved that issue, and I don't foresee that issue coming up in the future, so.
Important.
It's not something we're necessarily seeking.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you for your time.
Council, any further information from staff?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Sonia, Caleb, any, any concerns about the outstanding issue that we have to address in regard to the UDC eleven dash three A six B to pipe the drain, leave it open, to not pipe the drain and to leave it open?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Burton, no concerns, other than that they should provide fencing to protect public safety.
They're going, Madam Mayor, follow up? And they're going to do that, right?
I, yes, they're nodding yes. Can't remember if I had a condition of approval, or if they'd already shown it on their site plan, but yes, we have it covered.
Thank you, Sonia. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move we close the public hearing on H two thousand eighteen zero zero three two.
A motion and a second to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alies?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
There's a lot of, I mean, many, many times that we have apartment complexes come before us. And, you know, if it's not one thing, you know, they'll exceed in one thing, but then, you know, just meet minimums in another. And this board often finds reasons to, to say, even though you've met our requirements, it's not good enough. I, I think the initial delay in having questions was because you checked so many of the boxes of the things that we usually rag on, on you about, especially with the parking. When I first looked at this, I was like, oh, man, there's not gonna be any parking in here. But somehow you manage to fit another couple hundred spaces. Big woo-hoo. And then nobody wants to pipe canals, nobody. The two and a half years I've been here, I mean, just small sections, but to have eighteen hundred feet where you're saying, yeah, we're, we're just gonna pipe that. It's like, wait, what? Really? And tot lots for days, a pool, I mean, all these different amenities. The, the project is way in excess of, of what we require. And so, I, I mean, I would have a super hard time denying it. So, for all those reasons, I move that we approve H two thousand eighteen zero zero three two and grant the waiver to pipe the, the smaller section that they are asking not to.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
There's a lot that's great with this project. There really is. And Councilman Palmer brings up a good point with regards to kind of checking the boxes. But for me, it's, it's some of the sage advice from former Councilman Roundtree, who would, on occasion, speak of, of situations where we might not need to be in a hurry. You know, the property's not zoned, it's, it's requesting to be annexed and zoned and, and brought into the community, trying to match a future land use map that we're in the process of trying to redevelop. So, there's enough elements of this project that give concern for me that, that I don't think it's the right time right now to, to approve this annexation.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
The other big thing I meant to bring up was its location. A huge reason in which we've denied projects is because it's in the wrong place. It's surrounded by too many single-family homes. And then this room is packed full of people saying, I know you planned on putting apartments here, but please don't, because I'm here now. Well, it's not surrounded by single-family homes. It's real adjacent neighbor is other apartments. So, if it fit anywhere, this is where it fits, and this is where it's needed, given what we're asking to be built and what is being built just up the street at Ten Mile and Franklin. So, I, if we don't do this kind of thing now, when there isn't already a bunch of single-family homes surrounding it, if we're not in a hurry, and if we wait till that happens, well, then this room is full of people saying, well, now is the wrong time, because now we're all here.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I'm, I was listening. I agree with Councilman Palmer. I'll get that, on this, on that particular aspect. I think that what I like best about this project is the location. I do have some concerns. I, I, and I'm, yeah, I'm having a really hard time deciding my concerns outweigh my, you know, the thing, the good things. There are a lot of good things about this project. I do like the amenities and the location. It is needed. I don't love the design of the apartments, and I don't love no indoor amenities. It does have a lot to offer, and I don't like them all being sold off to sixty different people who could possibly manage them themselves and not do background checks. And, I mean, if you don't hire a property manager, you could do whatever you want. And as a property manager, I like that better. But looking out for the citizens and the neighbors, I'm not sure that I do.
I hate to introduce probably a, a topic that I should have asked our public safety representatives to weigh in. We've had discussions last week during our budget workshops on levels of service and, and the pressures that are on our current employees in keeping levels of service to the expectations of our citizens and the challenges of, of hiring staff. And this is not just about a land use application. We're looking at these developers to invest in our city. And with that investment, they'll have an expectation to a level of service that I don't know if we can meet. The thing that separates apartment developments and single-family housing developments is apartment complexes come up all at once. And so, your impact to services is immediate. It's not one building permit at a time and one family at a time. It's, it's the development. And it's fully occupied with our vacancy rates. It will be fully occupied, and you have hundreds of new residents that, that have service demands. So, that is, is certainly a concern, once it's built, to be able to adequately serve it. The other aspect is we're in the midst just kicking off a comprehensive plan update. And we're asking our citizens to weigh in on what they want their, their community to look at. This is one area that had a more area-specific design and participation by our community at the time and the property owners out in that area. So, that's probably less of a concern. But this is a pretty, it has a heavy impact on, on our community. And I would go back to what Councilman Burton said, are, are, is the timing right? Are we ready for this? And, and I can't say that if we look at levels of service, that, that we are.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
By each line of, of, of that way of thinking, we would need to do two things. We would need to start denying every single annexation application that comes before us until the comprehensive plan is done. And we would need to come up with a, a metric in which we allow so many dwelling units per firemen and policemen that we hire. If, if we don't have the data to back up saying we can't provide that level of service, then we're just up here talking, throwing out opinions. But if there's a fact that our public safety departments are unable to provide for a level of service, should we approve this? Then we, we need to come up with what that number is. So, okay, we've hired three officers, and we've hired three or six firemen. We can now approve so many more dwelling units. Unless we have that, we, we don't really have an argument to deny this today, let alone the next project. But if that's gonna be our way of thinking, we need to literally deny every project.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Not to get into the weeds too much, but one of the challenges that, that can come, I think, on a, on a citywide macro level with, with, you know, new annexations and the cost that, that comes with servicing them, is when the pace exceeds the ability for us to fund what's required to serve them, you, you have what we've seen our recent experience with. And our, our base budget and our existing revenue stream insufficient, or can be insufficient, to at least cover the base costs of, of existing service levels. So, you end up relying on new growth to try and cover that gap. You know, taken to what's an extreme, each individual project on its own, we may want to annex, but, you know, at a certain level, if you grow and annex too quickly, you just have fiscal constraints that don't allow you to fund those basic essential services. And so, right now, in light of the growth we've had over the past several years, you have that gap in our, in our, at least in the general fund, available resources. So, you have to utilize some new growth revenue to cover that gap. You know, you can look at, you know, projects like this or, or any new annexation, You know, you can look at, you know, projects like this or any new annexation and think of it as making a commitment to expend general fund dollars of a certain degree as a condition of annexing it. So, you know, if this were an example, to approve this and to stay committed to our levels of service with police and fire, to stay, among others, you'd be making a commitment to fund in future years going forward, general fund expenditures for police and fire and parks and all the support services necessary to serve this new addition to our city. That number, finance has those types of numbers that we can look at. So that's the challenge I think we have in this tremendous growth is, is on a micro level, we look at one single project, but we also have to be mindful of the, the total scale of the city and the challenge it can pose to being able to fund operations over the next 50 to 100 years. So I, I think we have some of that data that answers that question.
And I think you definitely had some of that data last week as the police department presented their budget and talked about level of service. And the, their PAM model considered a certain number of drive-throughs through our neighborhood that are not necessarily happening to the service level goal because of the other pressures that are out on the roads and, and with our different calls for service and, and needing to respond to that. So I, I say that because this will be an instant impact, unlike a, a single-family housing subdivision that comes through in phases and comes through one, one family unit at a time. This has a different impact, and, and I just wanted to bring that up to make sure it was part of the consideration.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Sonia, when, what was the date or about the date in which the applicant first contacted or approached or filed anything with the city for this?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer, I'm guessing probably approximately four months ago.
Madam Mayor, four months ago would have been the time to tell them, "We're closed for business right now." Not get to the point where it's the full public hearing before City Council and say, "No, we don't want this kind of large project." Let them go through all the investment and all the time and dealing with the city and getting to this point to say, "Thanks for your effort, but come back later." I mean, that would make me sick, that if we provided that kind of customer service. If that's what the council wants to have as a policy, that needs to go back to anybody that's gonna come to us from here on out, not people who've been in the pipeline for months.
And I, I can't argue with that, Mr. Palmer. But I can say what would make me sick is to not be able to deliver a level of service to the people that are here today. And to not be able to deliver a level of service to the future residents that would be moving into these dwellings with certain expectations as well. And, and that's all I'm pointing out.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Milam.
Councilman Palmer has a good point, though. And I think that if this is the line, the way that we're thinking right now with a comprehensive plan project going, you know, take, being a long process, maybe that's something that we should discuss as a council.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Yeah, my comments aren't really implying to do that necessarily. I think the, the hard stop may be as inappropriate as a position of approve anything, anywhere, at any time, so long as it's compliant with code, meaning that we just give up any discretion that, that we're elected to, to provide in making a decision of some, if a project's gonna come into the city and be part of, of our community, the long term, does it make sense? And statistically, vast majority, if probably 95% of the requests are probably approved, but nonetheless, I think we have that discretionary role. So the hard and fast rule, I think you're right, that, you know, a line in the sand isn't really necessary to, to exercise that discretion appropriately, but it goes both ways, that approving everything at any time, regardless of the impact on the level of service that the mayor raises, I don't know if that's necessarily the right approach either. So that was kind of where my, my comments came in on this.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam?
No.
Councilmember Burnt?
No.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
No.
Motion fails. I would ask if there is a, a new motion. Mr. Palmer.
Maybe we could open up the public hearing again and see if the applicant might be willing to have a continuation and maybe make some adjustments, or if he had any other comments on the topic that require a motion to open it back up? Or I move we reopen the public hearing on item 9B.
Second. I have a motion and a second to reopen the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. I would ask the representative if you have any comments on perhaps something that, phasing plans or, or anything like that, that, that we didn't ask the appropriate question of.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I guess I just want to hit on a few notes. So I was here about a year ago with a development called the Brickyard Subdivision, 246 units off of Eagle and Eustick. And after City Council meeting, or during City, during the discussion, or I guess after the approval, you guys said, "Bring more projects like this. We need more projects like this to the city." So in December, I contracted this property, and I've been working with Sonia since December on this project. We got great feedback from planning and zoning, and this is the first time that I've heard of anything about level of service or not annexing new property. And I appreciate everybody's opinion. I guess a couple of comments I have, so when we come in, we're also making an investment. We're bringing 301 units into this city, and with that, we're paying impact fees, we're paying property taxes. So we're helping increase that general budget to cover the cost of this development. In light, in addition to that, it's 18 acres, we have 300 units over 18 acres. So yes, we're different than a single-family residential development where we all, we come in all at once, but our impact fees come all in at once. The area to service is an 18-acre area for 301 units. There's a lot of impact fees with 301 units. Or if you do a 301-unit, uh, single-family development, your impact fees come in over time, but that's also a 60, 70, 80-acre project. So it's a lot more land, a lot more area to cover. And so I guess my argument to, we're coming all at once, we come in all at once, but we come in with a pile of cash and impact fees, and we start paying property taxes imme- immediately to cover our costs, our burden to the community. So I'm open to any ideas. I'm a little frustrated because I did, I was told, "Bring another project like this. You guys have a lot of people coming to this city. People are concerned about affordability. We're providing a solution to that." But yet, we're not being welcomed tonight. And so it just seems like a mixed message. So I'm open to any ideas if you want us to phase, we're open to that. I'm open to any ideas. But I'd like a better explanation.
You know, I guess I would like to respond to that because we've had exponential growth. We're trying to figure out how to, to continue to be able to meet the expectations of our current residents, as well as to protect your investment as well in being able to provide the levels of service to the new residents we'll be welcoming in when we do this. This is not the one and only development application that we've had, and we have hundreds, if not thousands, of lots in the pipeline that we have already made a commitment to serve. When you were here six months ago, or, or even a year ago, we've changed substantially since then. This council approved a, a budget five years into a new comprehensive plan because of our growth rate to allow us to move forward in updating our comprehensive plan at year six, because 30% of our population didn't live here when the last update was here. So things have changed very rapidly, and I can understand your frustration. But we have 106,000 residents today to make sure that we make good on our commitment to them. And generally, new construction, the impact fees pay for capital items. They don't pay for personnel, and that is the majority of our base budget, is personnel costs. Property and development lag two years behind in order for those property taxes to catch up, to pay for personnel and base expenses. And so, yeah, it's fresh on my mind because we just delivered a budget last week, and this council has discussions to, to be made on what we do as a community and what we're willing to fund. And those are our weighty responsibilities. So this is, you've, you've brought, there's a lot of good things about this project. I want to make sure that I had the discussion in front of this council on, when you make a decision tonight, then on my shoulders as the, the city administrator and on the shoulders of every department in the city that delivers services to these new residents, that we're going to be able to perform to your expectations to provide protection to your investment to.
I hear you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
We've talked a lot about fire and police without asking their opinion, given that, you know, we do have a fire station on Ten Mile, one a couple of miles up the road on Franklin, we're about to build another one nearby on Overland. Do either of your departments feel like this project in its density, not spread out, but this situation, would it present an additional undue, or unmanageable strain on your departments, or what, what's your opinion on it?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Palmer. It's, obviously, it is gonna create calls for service, right? And these types of projects usually start creating calls for service when they start working with burglaries of construction sites, those types of issues start coming in. And then obviously, when they become occupied, just like everywhere else in the city, every other neighborhood in the city, they create work for us. Now, to what scale this is going to affect us, I don't know. There's obviously all kinds of different socioeconomic factors that come into play that drive that kind of, those, those issues, those calls. And I, I can't give you a hard answer on what this project, what I'm looking at right here, what that's gonna do to us necessarily.
I can tell you that the different service departments have been working with community development to start looking at our staff reports and making sure that their comments will soon be delivered by them, not by Sonia. Planning shouldn't be delivering the comments from other departments, but that these all have to be a consideration as we're, we're trying to deal with the, the growth demands, with service demands, and with hiring demands to, to be able to, to address the, the expectations of those developments that are coming in. So we're, we're in the midst, I know, police have already had the initial discussion with planning of how they can be better informed and integrated into that process. So we'll be bringing something back to you probably next month, but those discussions have, have started.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, do you have any recommendations for me on how to proceed forward, or would you prefer that we terminate our application?
Don't, don't do that yet. You haven't heard from council and, and what, what they would like to do.
Okay. I apologize.
But thank you. Any, any further questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, thank you. I would entertain a motion then. To close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Borton.
Uh, move that we deny, item 9B, H.2018-0032.
I have a motion and a second is, do you have a basis for the denial?
Madam, I have my previous comments, and the comments and concerns raised by other council members, which I tend to agree with, but those are the reasons for me voting against the previous motion, are the same reasons for the motion I'm making now.
Okay. And Mr. Nary, do we have, we can go and, and pull those minutes to pull them into the...
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the, the comments certainly were part of the record. What I, what I heard Councilman Borton say was that basically the, the, it's not in the best interest of the city at this time to annex this property, and therefore denying the annexation then naturally falls that the preliminary plat conditional use permit would be denied since annexation isn't granted. But simply was not in the best interest of the city at this time based on the best interest of the city, and there's really no other necessity for the city to indicate otherwise, so. If that's, if that was his reasoning, I think that's what I had heard, so.
Correct.
Okay. And second agrees?
Yes, second agrees.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I would just ask staff to, as we have similar applications, you know, start trying to enter the pipeline, fill them in, let them know what happened tonight, and that they might not want to bother.
I don't...
Word it, word it better. But, let them know.
I think that's necessarily a fair assessment of, an exercise of discretion.
Can you pull your mic down?
Sure, sure. That's all right, it's okay.
Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Milam?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
No.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Thank you. Okay, item 10A is under Department Reports, and we have Chris Pope here to talk about the program year 2018 for CDVG.
Madam Mayor, council members. So today is kind of the initiation of the, the annual action plan process that we go through. We have just recently gone through all of our application processes and developed our recommendations. Each of you should have received a memo with some of the details of what happened as part of that conversation and the committee meetings that we had there. And this is to kind of just introduce the conversation about the action plan... just introduce the conversation about the action plan, and, and kind of finalize the, the recommended projects for you guys here. Yeah, do we have a quorum? I, I can wait.
I don't count.
What? What's going on?
We don't have...
Madam Brown?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think Councilman Palmer's outside, but it'd be no different than if he went to the restroom, so I think you can continue. He hasn't excused himself from the meeting, because then, so the quorum isn't, isn't gone until that were to happen.
We're good, no worries. So, for this upcoming year, I guess to, to kind of introduce the idea of the action plan, so we get information about the amount of grant money we're getting through the community development block round every year, and then, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, they require that we basically tell them exactly how we're going to use that money before they give us a cent, which, to me, is smart. I wouldn't want to give anybody any money without any real understanding of what they're committing to use that money for. So, that's kind of what this presentation is today, is to outline exactly what we are proposing to you as city council to approve, how we use the money over the next twelve months in this next program year. To kind of review a lot of information that I think that I've already presented to you in previous presentations, this next year, we saw a pretty hefty jump in, in our grant allocation amount to four hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. And what we do with that money comes down to two different factors. It comes down to one, what you guys decide you want, which, this, we have a grant committee every year that reviews applications and presents to you recommendations for what you do, but it also really comes down to who applies for funding. So, here is a list of, of the individuals who are on the grant committee, and everything that I'm going to present to you today in terms of the responses to the applications, those that we're recommending for funding and those that we are not recommending for funding, were unanimously decided by all of these committee members. We don't do a majority rules thing, at least in the way that I try to manage the, the committee, this is all unanimous. This is also something that has been run through, I mean, as you can tell, quite a few departments here at the city in terms of city staff who are involved, so there's quite a lot of support both internally and externally for the recommendations that we're presenting to you today. So, this year, again, we had twenty-one applications, which is more than double that we've ever had before, quite a few applications for funding, which is good, because we're a growing city, we have a growing grant, we have growing budgets all over the place, and we have a growing need, and that's being reflected here in terms of the applications that we're receiving. To kind of jump right in, the, what we are, what we're recommending to you in terms of projects for this year, we have eight projects in total plus an administrative budget, so nine kind of line items here, that we are recommending to you for, for approval. Of those, out of the twenty-one, that would mean there's thirteen projects that we are not going forward with, and I'll outline those a little bit in a minute. First are the public service projects, so these are kind of broken out in projects who, that are defined or designed to focus on certain populations, certain specific needs in the community that aren't capital, that aren't infrastructural, that aren't housing-related, just people in the community who have needs, we'll put money in, into these projects to help meet those needs. So, one that we have funded quite a lot in, in the last few years is the Boys and Girls Clubs of Ada County, particularly here, their Meridian campus. They have a scholarship program for low to moderate income families who in other, otherwise wouldn't be able to afford any of the services, any of the programs at the community center here. They requested ten thousand dollars, and the grant committee has proposed that we fund them at thirteen thousand, so more than what they asked for. We've had a, we've just seen a lot of great work that they've done, and they've helped out in a lot of different ways, and when we had a lot of conversations in our grant committee about the impacts of having children not be unaccompanied after school, or going home, and not having supervision, or just some of the benefits of having that after-school education, or even just the summer opportunities, what that brings to the child development, but also to the family, family development, a lot of those that have received this service in the past are, are single-parent households, so the ability for that parent to take off work, to go home to beautify the kids, isn't really an opportunity. It increases a lot of the economic stability of these families and our grant committee, and I think as the city has, has been a partner in the past, really likes the program and thinks it's, it's essential. Kind of moving on, and I, I guess, little number right next to it, this year, the goal is to get at least fifty families or fifty kids with this grant amount of money into these programs and supported this way. Moving on into the Meridian Food Bank, again, staple of our community here, their hunger relief program, they've regularly used these funds in the past to, to purchase and then provide food products to those who are in need. They asked for thirty thousand dollars, and they have, we are recommending that they be funded at that full request, and again, the goal here is at least two thousand households are supported during the life of this grant. There are two other public service projects that we have here, I'm going to skip down to the one on the bottom here, Jesse Tree of Idaho, because they're a little bit more familiar to us. We've funded them over the last two years. They apply, they, they provide in the community and across the Treasure Valley, emergency rental assistance grants to prevent homelessness. So, for whatever reason, someone finds themselves a little bit behind on rent, and they need a one-time assistance to make sure they don't end up on the street or have to go to a shelter, this grant and this organization provide that one-time assistance in order to keep them in the house and kind of move forward with that. We're hoping that, at a bare minimum, ten households are able to be supported here. We're kind of pushing a prioritization, particularly with families who are facing homelessness with this program, so that's where we are there. Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burns.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt you. Just one question before I forget. In these, in these situations where we're giving money to folks like Jesse Tree or whatever, these one-time allocation, or, or do we require anything back from them to, to receive this money at all? Like, for example, community service, or something to come, you know, give back to the community what we're giving to them?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burnt, we, we do not. So, I, I guess, let me preface the conversation here in that it doesn't mean we can't. A lot of the conversation we've been having is making sure that we have cost-effective allocations here, that obviously, somebody we need to keep in the house as opposed to getting them on the street, there are, I mean, public safety and healthcare costs that, for whatever reason, just skyrocket at the moment, somebody can't stay in stable housing. So, we see cost savings in terms of this, but it's more than just the, the fiscal aspect of it. We've never required Jesse Tree in the past in terms of our agreements with them and how they use this money to have any, give back in, in some way, but it doesn't mean that we can't, and there's an example of a project that we're proposing that I'm going to kind of, our grant committee is suggesting something along those lines in terms of creating stipulations for how money can be used, and I'll get to that to kind of show you an example here in a minute, but it doesn't mean that, I mean, you guys have the authority over these funds and how you utilize them and stipulations you create, and we can have that conversation as we move forward, but these are really, I want you to know about the projects, and if there are concerns, this is a great forum to bring them up. So, thank you for your question.
I, it was just a thought, just a question, not, not anything, just, you know, directly related to Jesse Tree by any means, that was just a thought that I had.
Of course.
Thank you.
So, the last project that we have here is the Education Foundation for West Ada School District. They have managed in the past a program called Housing Plus High School Equals Success. They requested ten thousand dollars, and we're recommending a full funding for that project. This project specifically, this program, is something that's housed at the school district that's designed to help homeless youth, particularly unaccompanied youth. For those who don't know what an unaccompanied youth is, it's somebody who, at least as they qualify for this program, is, is an individual who's under the age of twenty-one, who's still enrolled in high school, who doesn't have parents, doesn't have family to stay with, has no other means but to care for themselves. Now, if they find themselves in a housing situation or housing difficulty, which is often amongst these, this particular population, there are needs there. This program was set up to help meet those needs of those particular individuals in the district, and they came to us and asked for funding, and we think that now is a good time, given the success of, of the program in the past, to kind of move forward with the recommendation for here, and there is a much more robust of a program here than I'm going to get into today, in terms of what the requirements are, in terms of graduation and grades, and all sorts of different things. But we'll talk about that in, in a future week. I'm actually going to have, for every one of these organizations and projects, there will be somebody from the applicant organization who's going to come and talk to you about the project in a couple of weeks at our next workshop meeting for a few minutes. Feel free to grill them there. I don't have all the details about every single thing, but I think a lot of the conversation that we'll want to have, we can, it'll be best coming from them rather than from me, but I will do what I can to answer the questions today. So, we, we have one public facilities project that we are recommending for funding. You can, it is a, a streetlight installation project along East Chateau Avenue. If you look here in the map, you can see the little red dashed line that outlines that road and where those streetlights will be installed. This was chosen as a priority, given its proximity to an elementary school. The, the original request was for a hundred thousand dollars. The grant, despite it growing, was not big enough to, to, I guess, allow for that to happen, so utilizing twenty-five thousand dollars from a previous year that's currently unallocated, plus the amount that we have left over here, the, the Department of Public Works is, we're recommending that we give them sixty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars to move forward with this project as it stands. I do want to note that this is, this is a departure from what was given to you in your memo not too long ago. The initial plan was to utilize any public facility monies that we were going to allocate for retrofitting or upgrading of, of streetlights throughout the community in certain areas. After sending that memo to you, like literally thirty minutes after, I got an email from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development that said that's not an eligible project. So, those three super cost-effec, super cost-effective, awesome, huge wide, wide-ranging impact projects, we weren't able to do. Granted, this isn't any less of an important or needed issue or project, particularly in this area, so those monies, just so that you know, are being moved and funneled into this particular project. So, in terms of, and, and another category that we're talking about of funding here is slum and blight redevelopment area projects that we're looking at, there were a few applications that we received, the one that we are recommending for funding, at the full amount that was requested is to Meridian Development Corporation, kind of in conjunction with the City of Meridian here, to provide right-of-way improvements along East Third Street as ProBuild is making their move and their expansion, that we can kind of put in curb and gutter, sidewalk, tile over the open ditch that's, that's right along that, that road there, to kind of put some more public facility infrastructure in that area where it will be needed, particularly as they make that move. And then, there are two other projects here that are, don't really fit into any of the other categories, they're just other projects. So, Meridian Library District has applied for almost upward of seventy-eight thousand dollars for a restroom upgrade for, so they can make their restrooms at the Cherry Lane Facility ADA compliant. They recently got note that it wasn't ADA compliant and applied for funding to help make that infrastructural change. And then, going back to another kind of perennial ask we have here, the Ada County Housing Authority, who has been providing down payment assistance and homebuyer assistance programs to allow individuals, whatever assistance in terms of closing costs and down payment assistance, to purchase a home in Meridian. They asked for fifty thousand, we're recommending a thirty thousand, a thirty thousand dollar funding amount. This, this one is one I wanted to kind of plug back in with you, Councilmember Burnt, because a lot of concerns we have around just the average median home price, whether or not low to moderate income people can even qualify for a loan to purchase a home in Mer, in Meridian. How do we make sure that the monies that are being doled out through this program are going to those who are in the most need? If we're going to provide this kind of assistance, we want it to be to families who are going to stay a while and who have a greater need, or who, as the, the committee kind of discussed, is a little bit larger of a family. So, stipulations that the, the committee wanted to recommend as kind of a condition of this project is that we prioritize only families receiving these grants and those who are willing and able to commit to staying in the city for the long term. Not that we've had any issues with only individuals getting these grants, or people getting the grant and then selling the house a year later, that's not something that has happened to our knowledge, and again, if you have any questions about that, I don't have case-specific examples, but when we have a representative from the Housing Authority come in, feel free to ask those questions. But we're feeling as, as the market kind of gets a little crazier, as, as housing inventory is, is continually dropping, as units are less available, as prices go up, we still want to be able to provide this kind of service, but we want to make sure that we're getting a maximum benefit for the amount of investment that we're putting in here. And the goal is that at least three families will be helped through this particular project over the next twelve months. And the last thing here is kind of, I don't necessarily want to have a continuation of the conversation we had last week with the, the budget presentations, but there, there is an ask here, and this is kind of a strategic ask from both the planning staff, the planning management, coordination with the mayor's office, and also through the grant committee, that we feel that the best recommendation for asking for administrative funds would be based on the assumption that the funding for this position would be moved to full-time and would reside in the Community Development Fund and not in the grant. So, this action plan reflects that. If, for whatever reason, over the, over the coming weeks, we have more conversation about this position, managing this grant, and, and where that revenue stream comes from to offset the costs of the position, whether it's from the Community Develop, Community Development Fund, or partially funded through this grant, whatever decision you guys make through your budgetary processes, we have the ability to, to change this plan to work accordingly. But something that I did want to make sure is clear is that any increase in funding to the administrative part of this grant will take money from other projects that have just been outlined for you. Where that money comes from, I don't know yet, but the assumption is in this action plan and the projects that we're recommending have been created with the assumption that the funding for this position and the administrative costs associated with personnel costs will come from, entirely from the Community Development Fund. I want to give you guys an opportunity to respond to that, to, to that particular portion, or also to just any of the other projects that I've outlined for funding that we're recommending. As I move forward, I'll, I'll review the ones that we're not funding, that we're not recommending, but I want to give you guys, if you have any questions about, specifically about any of these nine projects that I've outlined, I'd entertain those.
Thank you, Chris. Counsel, questions? Yes, Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, any of the ones that you just recommended, have they in the past not utilized their funds? Because I know that we've had some in the past that I don't see on this list, that under certain circumstances have not been able to utilize their funds.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Little Roberts, with what's been presented here, we have full confidence in how those projects will be utilized. We've had good experiences with those that we funded before, and confidence in those organizations that we haven't. The, the organizations that we have had struggles with in the past, we're not recommending those for funding this year, not necessarily because of that, but these are kind of the, what rose to the top, and we feel confident both in terms of the timely expenditure of the funds, and in terms of the organizational capacity with those. I, I do want to, to make a note that this project with the East Third Street Right-of-Way Improvements is one that we, we have, we've had a lot of conversation about, particularly as a, as the CDBG grant is not paying for the entirety of the project, that we are leveraging a match from MDC, and depending on MDC's budget, it will dictate kind of the timing and the use of the funds here. We, we have offered to utilize the grant money to kind of preempt or do kind of a phased side of construction, but a lot of that information we don't really have yet, we're working with MDC, which is kind of why you see kind of a, a joint program here for this project, is if there are things that we, we have to spearhead in terms of design or construction here at the city, we'll work with MDC to kind of make that work. We don't know what it looks like yet, but we feel confident that this is a need, that it's a priority, and we, we have confidence in MDC's capacity to mobilize that matching fund in order to make this project whole in a timely way.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Thank you.
Mr. Burns?
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate your presentation. I, I, I think that these organizations are deserving of the funds that you're requesting. I, I frankly, I wish we had more money to be able to help more people and do more things for the community. for the community. I, I feel strongly about helping those in need. A lot of times, folks are just down and out to no fault of their own and are in situations in their lives where they just need a little help. And I, I think it's, it's great that we're able to help people out. However, I, I do believe, without sounding cold-hearted or inhumane in any way, I believe it's also important for people to give back to the community, you know, when they've received help, that they give back and, and in some way, somehow, and I, and I don't know if this is the form that we discuss that right now, but in the future, I think it would be advantageous for us to have this discussion in ways, you know, when we give money, deservedly so, that, that folks can give back in some way, in some way, somehow. I, I think that that's what develops community. I think that that was, you know, those type of situations bring community together. And so I would entertain that discussion.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Burton, I 100% agree, and that's something that after, I guess, internally, if I can speak without putting Caleb on the spot, we, we've been wanting to kind of have a more formal discussion about community services and community development through this grant, but also in terms of how we meet the growing needs of a growing community and what these grants look like, what the program looks like on a long-term basis, after we kind of get through 2018's conversations. And I think that's something that we're definitely going to revisit either in the short term, as we have a public hearing in the, in the coming weeks, or in the, in a little bit longer term, as, as we get kind of more of an opportunity to, to talk about what this program can provide for the city. And I think a lot of, I guess, some of the conversation around this, the, the position in particular, kind of, at least the way that I see it, kind of embodies that same conversation, is, is what do we want to see in terms of the capacity of the city and how it can help grow the capacity of the community? Is it through stipulations for giving back? Is it through targeted projects or programs? Is it, what does that look like? And I think I've tried to make it clear over the last few months, at the least, that your involvement is crucial in that, not only because none of this money goes anywhere without a yes vote, but also because you have the moral stewardship to oversee the community development activities of those who are in need in the community.
And I think you, you, in your presentation, talked about the public good that some of these dollars are going to, it's not to one family, or it's, there's a public good to it. But I think that Mr. Burton brings up a, a good conversation to say, to those that, for housing assistance, for example, if you can look to your peers or look for best practices on how there has been a demonstrated give back to the community, it makes that money more palatable.
Absolutely, yes.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Everyone knows my opinions on, on the program, but when it comes to the administration of the program, I can't thank you enough for your devotion to ensuring that the program is run the way that it needs to be. Not only in that it, it makes it the most effective use of, of the taxpayer dollars that we've been entrusted with, but really in how well you understand the law and how well you make sure that all these things are compliant, really covers the rest of us. So thank you for your time and effort in making sure that this is done the right way. Really appreciate it.
Well, and I'll say, just to add to that, is Chris has worked with the recipients to make sure they understand the reporting aspects and the timelines and all of those that I don't think have been as well organized and articulated in the past. So when they even submit, they do have a greater understanding of, and, and you've added that. And I know not just this council appreciates it and the mayor, but finance does. And, and Caleb, I'll, I'll leave, I'll include you too, Caleb, in that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Palmer, if I can respond, I am endlessly grateful for the support and the confidence that you guys have. And without undercutting any of that, there's still a lot of work that we have to do, which is why you have the, the position, budget enhancement you have on your, on your plate this year. There's a lot of things that we need to be doing, that we can be doing, that we, opportunities to kind of make this premiere, that we're still working on. So thank you, and, and I, I kind of say that to kind of like tease you guys, because if everything goes well with the enhancement in terms of being able to take this position full-time, you're, you're going to see a lot more to, to praise.
Thank you and stay tuned.
Yes.
Any other questions from counsel?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
I've, I've got more for you, if I can run through it real fast. I, I gave you, I gave you the stuff that's like key, super important, but there's other things I have to make sure, just based on regulations, that you are accountable for. So, sorry, but let, let me run through those really fast. I just want to let you know the projects that have not been recommended for funding. These are generally in, we, I present these to you in the case that you have a problem with something that has been recommended, and you want to pull from another application, I want to make sure that you know what those applications were. So the school district reached out with two other applications that also focused on homeless youth, meeting housing barriers, or I guess, meeting some of the needs around housing barriers and transportation barriers. These are focused more on families as opposed to unaccompanied youth, so a homeless family who's having a hard time getting their kid to school, or getting to a doctor's appointment, or paying rent, whatever the situation might be. These are what these two applications were asking for. We, as a grant committee, decided to not move forward with recommending these, particularly because they're un, untried, untested. They'd be brand-new programs that they would be creating with this funding, which is a little too dependent for us. We'd like to see some leverage and matching and a little bit more capacity experience with this. We didn't want to get into the program management game, at least as it comes to managing some other organizations' programs with these funding. We, the grant committee really connected with the ideas and liked the opportunity, particularly reaching out to homeless students and homeless, the families of homeless students, but these two, we've kind of left alone for right now. In addition, NeighborWorks Boise, who we've partnered with in the past to provide homebuyer assistance grants, had applied for a homebuyer education program grant that would allow them to put on a, a few homebuyer education classes using these funds. There were some questions we had in terms of the eligibility of the project and what we can actually use the money for when it came to this, so we, we cited on not recommending this project, though we have reached out and tried to still offer a way to host, if not pay for, some of these things. In terms of public facilities here, as mentioned, at the bottom, those three, those LED fixture upgrade projects that we can't facilitate, even though we wanted to, and then there are these three on top that are different streetlight installation projects as well. Again, kind of explained that the preference was given to the East Chateau project that we have recommended for funding because of its proximity to the elementary school there. So there were four other projects. Two were in support of Main Plaza LLC. These applications were kind of an economic development-related thing that would provide direct assistance to the business to, to repaint and provide signage. In lieu of some of the other needs and conversations we had, we cited against recommending those. MDC also came to the table with another project that would require, or was asking for funding for right-of-way improvements along South Broadway Avenue, which is right next to, basically right on the intersection of the East Third that we have, are recommending to kind of help complete that, that curve as ProBuild makes that move. And, and we cited against that, just again, in lieu of a lack of funding focusing on the priority project on East Third as opposed to South Broadway. And the last one was from the Foundation for Family Life. There's, they're an organization that's based out of Salt Lake City who provides transitional housing and counseling for those who are recently incarcerated, who are homeless and who have substance abuse issues. They were seeking funding to purchase a property to set up a transitional house in the community. They're doing a pretty extensive region-wide push with that, expanding up here, trying to find a way to set up these centers in Boise, Nampa, Caldwell, Meridian, Eagle, all over the place. And they're expanding up here. We didn't have the money for it. There was an appetite and desire by the, the committee to kind of explore more what exactly they were trying to do and how we can support. And the decision was that due to a lack of funding and the city not right now wanting to get into the property acquisition business, at least as it comes to using this grant money for that, that we would cite on, on not recommending this year, but kind of exploring that partnership as it moves forward.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Madam Mayor, Chris, I think it's a great idea for us to participate in helping purchase property for Meridian's portion in Nampa, in Boise, anywhere else that's available. All in.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Palmer, CBBG can't be used for that, but oh, well.
Good call.
So there will be more conversations about that as we move forward in the future. They're an organization that, that made it pretty clear that they're, they're coming up to our area, Treasure Valley, our area, regardless of whether or not they get funding. So I kind of teased that we may have an opportunity to have conversations about supporting their programming or kind of seeing what services that they're bringing to the community in future years, but this year in terms of specific property and any kind of capital investment, that's something that we are going to kind of avoid with this project this year. I also want to let you know that we have, we're instituting some backup projects into our action plan, specifically the, the three streetlight installation projects that were noted as not being recommended. We're doing this not because we don't like the projects or because we're hoping something falls through so we can fund these, it's just kind of a safety net in case something does go wrong. I know that in the past, we've had some situations where projects have fallen through, subrecipients back out for whatever reason, and the city hasn't had a backup, at least one that's not formally in the plan. This gives us a lot of legal flexibility here by having these on the table. So kind of a quick summary here, if you want, I can send this information out and you can get specific, you can run through this all you want, but on the far-right side, the total request was over $1.3 million. The total available, if you include the $25,000 we're taking from an unallocated fund and from this current program year, we have just under $450,000. We are recommending that you fund the full amount of what is available to the projects that have been put towards you today. So to kind of, the last kind of two things I want to do is kind of review another portion of the action plan. The action plan that we put forward is more than just projects. We also have to have goals, we have to have objectives, we have to tie them to our five-year strategic plan, and there's some other things that we have to report on. And this is kind of just a, a layout of the goals that we're setting as part of this plan, so preventing homelessness for at least 10 adults and families, intervening in and preventing the homelessness for at least 15 unaccompanied youth, serving at least 2,000 people to help relieve their hunger through the food bank, providing 50 children with access to the Boys and Girls Clubs programs, at least helping, at least three families to buy a home in Meridian, and then proving accessibility through new public infrastructure streetlights and the, the restroom upgrade at the library. So that's kind of what we're shooting for. If you want number, you want data, this is what we're, this is where it all comes down to, is these are the people, these are lives. Every single one of these numbers is a person, is a family, is a household, and that's ultimately how we're trying to mobilize these funds, is to actually make a difference in the people's lives who are in need. And I also kind of want to throw this in here, and I probably won't ever mention it again, but to kind of let you guys know some other components of the action plan that I don't have to talk to you about, at least in detail, these are some of the things that we have to report on, on an, actually semi-annual basis. We do this in the action plan, and we do it every year at the end of the year in our, in our CAPER report. We have to justify and explain any activities to expand or maintain affordable housing in the community, what the, what the local and regional barriers are for affordable housing, any public housing reports, we don't have any public housing, so that makes it really easy here, what the city's efforts are to end homelessness, to reduce poverty, to meet special and underserved needs in the community, accounting of our partnerships and other organizations that we work with in terms of all of these things, and any analysis and development of institutional or systematic structures. And I, I kind of want to pose this to you because this is the everything else that I do in my position. This position is more than just making sure you, everybody uses the money and doesn't break the law. It's more than creating projects and somewhere to throw this money to help people. There's a lot of effort that goes into these things, the things that are focused on kind of the macro issues in the community. As we grow, as we see increasing poverty, or we concern about increased poverty or increased homelessness, affordable housing, all these kinds of conversations, that this position is frankly the only position that the city has on staff that is directly responsible for all of these things. We have conversations, we have different support staff across the city that kind of help in these issues, but this position is where any of this falls into place. When we talk about service needs, the level of service, there's a lot of the population that as we grow that gets segmented, whether it comes to housing costs, income inequality, lots of other issues that can, can pop up in a city that's growing as quickly as we're growing. This position is designed to add value to the city by being able to try and manage those things. And at the very least, if I'm not doing a good job managing them, I'm federally required to report on them every, twice every year. So this is kind of the everything else that this position does that I don't, I, I literally never talk to you guys about. But there are things that I think that are important, I want to make sure that you know as you kind of deliberate about, how are we using this grant money? What does this position look like? What does this position even do? This is some of the other stuff that it does. And I just want to make sure that you guys, you know about that. So lastly, really quickly here, I know we got a surprisingly short council agenda today, and I'm, I'm keeping you from your families. So on Friday, this last Friday, public notices were published in the Meridian Press and in the Idaho Statesman, as well as online. The action plan, as it's been presented to you today, went public and is open for public comment. It will be through July 24th. On the 10th, that workshop is when you'll get presentations from all of the applicant organizations. They're instructed to give a three-minute presentation and allow maximum two minutes for questions or commentary, so feel free to come with questions about any of these things. Hopefully it won't take too much of your workshop time. We've never done it before, but I want to give them an opportunity to make their case and give you an opportunity to question them directly. On the 17th, we'll have a public hearing, so again, today I'm not asking for anything. On the 17th of July, we'll have the public hearing as we do every year, and then on the 24th, a week later, I'll come back with all of the revisions and edits to the plan and ask for your approval. Between now and the 24th, if you have concerns, if you have questions, whether it's about this position, a project, a stipulation you want added to a project, please let me know. The, the plan as it's been presented is in draft form, it is not finalized and will not be until you approve it on the 24th, assuming that you do approve it. So this is completely fluid and flexible. Hopefully, we'll, I can accommodate any of the revisions or edits that you, you want to have made here. Just let me know, and we'll do that. And then obviously, right afterwards, we'll send it off to HUD for their approval. I mean, kind of with that, that's everything. Trying to remember everything, because over the next few months, despite being in front of you, I'm not going to give you all that information again. You have the memo to refer to, and I'm willing to set out these, set out these slides, but as we have conversations with the applicant organizations and with the public, I'm not going to go into this kind of detail again, unless you really need me to, of which I will do. But any final questions, I'll entertain, otherwise I'll let you give it home.
Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Chris, the, the three backup programs were all six figures. Is there an opportunity for, for example, the MDBA to, to submit an application for streetskate improvements on Idaho Avenue, which is a small figure? And have that as a backup? So if someone's $10,000 short, you have got a fully fundable backup as opposed to doing a piece of a large one?
Madam Mayor, Council President Borton, generally speaking, we don't allow applications that weren't submitted during the application window to be part of the plan, but that's me. I don't have any authority to make those decisions. So if there were, if there were a proposal that you wanted to reach out to the MDBA and, and ask them to submit an application as a backup project, then yeah, we, we could accommodate that. It's just not usually what we do. We've never really run into that, but...
And Madam Mayor, the idea comes from not trying to bump any recommended funding, but if somebody has, you know, a smaller amount that's unexpended and isn't available, you couldn't do the other three large projects, you couldn't touch them.
Yeah.
So...
Not in their entirety, anyway, yeah.
If it's $10,000, you're not going to probably even start them. It would probably carry forward. So if that's an opportunity, if you're saying, should the MDB- So if that's an opportunity, if you're saying, should the MDBA desire to bring that forward, they could contact you, submit an application as a proposed backup, they could then come on July 10th, make a presentation as a potential backup for consideration?
Madam Mayor, Council President Borton, technically, yes. I, I mean, without overstating, if you guys wanted all of our grant money to go to parking in downtown, you can make that decision, and you can take all the recommendations that we've given you as a grant committee and wash them.
I'm not suggesting...
No, of course not. And I recognize that, on the record, that that is not your suggestion, that you're suggesting that we have maybe an opportunity to have it as a backup. And if that's something that you guys want, then we can facilitate that. And I'm ultimately kind of appealing to your authority here. If that's something you want, then we will accommodate. It's something we've never done before, but it doesn't mean that we can't.
And Madam Mayor, the ask is on the organization, not us necessarily.
Of course.
If that opportunity's available, it's made known to them, the onus is on them to do the legwork to get it done fast.
Madam Mayor, Council President Borton, in that case, then no, they cannot. If it is on them, there is no more, the application period's been closed for about two months, there's not an opportunity for that. If you were to evoke your authority and ask me to include a tardy application into our action plan, then absolutely, we'll do it. But in terms of like the actual organizational policies and structures, it, they couldn't, there's no mechanism in which they could submit a new application, whether to be recommended or to be a backup, unless you asked for it.
Madam Mayor, if it's legal...
Mr. Burton.
And it doesn't, isn't unfair to any of the other applicants, and doesn't jeopardize the program in any way, or create any unusual administrative headache on you, and if it only affords greater flexibility should there be a small amount of resources, then I would say yes, include them, it affords you that much flexibility. I might, two cents on it at least.
And Madam Mayor, Council President Borton, if I can respond, that I would need a lot more information, more conversation, first and foremost, to determine that it's eligible to be included. And obviously, a lot of that information, there will be some administrative time and cost in order to make that determination, and we'll do it. But it may not be eligible, and that's fine. We'll see how it goes in the future, but if that's your wish as a council, we'll...
It's just one, just one, but it's just an idea.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Chris, I think that might be answered really quickly with one question to Nick if they ever completed their 501(c)(3), because don't they have to be 501(c)(3) to be eligible?
They do not.
Oh, okay, that takes care of that.
But it really depends, really depends, so...
Lot of details.
It makes it a lot easier if they are, but yeah. There's a lot of questions that I need to, I need to sit down with them to have that conversation, but I won't sit down with them unless you really want me to sit down with them, so...
Okay.
I think this counsel would like you to see if that would be an eligible project.
Yes. Sounds good.
Okay. Any other questions from counsel? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, item 11A is ordinance 18-1783. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this ordinance by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City. I'm reading ordinance number 18-1783, an ordinance file H2018-0017, Wells subdivision, for annexation of a parcel of land located in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section 29, township 3 North Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 14.80 acres of land from RUT to R4, medium-low-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Counsel, do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve ordinance number 18-1783 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All eyes are most carried. Item 12 is future meeting topics. Anything? Counsel, we have AIC conference this week, Dairy Day's events. It is Dairy Day's week. Pancake feed on Thursday at 4:00 at the Dairy Barn, parade Friday, 6:45. Main Street Market Saturday, it kicks off at 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And the mayor's senior advisory board has one of their Safety Series classes at, on Saturday at 10:00 AM at the Public Safety Training Center. That said, item 13 is executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move to go into executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74-206, 1A, B, I, F, J.
Real thing. Okay.
Just F and J, right?
Oh, just A, B, C, D, E, F, G.
That was all?
Oh, J and A and B and, okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, we call roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.